Yep, he was dressed in his Knights of Columbus. He had a giant sword and a big hat. The constituents was put into the, um, two cars. He went over there like that, dressed like that. And to the police chief called and said, no, the act.
They don't mean both. He don't see us.
For contract, we put the city council president, the vice. It's the same thing the way that we did with Margaret Platt. Um, president, vice president, and then the president-elect or third member. Same with, but it was posted, it was. We learned that from last time, because when we did it with Mark, we didn't post it.
Did you call me for? Did you call me for? At Brenda's, they didn't have it? You're just like, in and out?
Betty was quiet.
A meeting, a little review, and all these rules. But I just pushed everything.
And it seems like today went by really fast, right?
Good evening and wel- are the mics working this time? All right. Good evening and welcome to the Personnel Committee. Today is Monday, March tenth. It is now six thirty-six P M. Voting members, we have present today. To my left, we have the Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilor Wendy Luzon, and Councilor Anna Levy. Pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, this meeting of the Personnel Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here in the City Council Chamber or view our meeting, um, through our social media channels. At this point, can you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands. I pledge allegiance to God, to the universal liberty and justice for all.
Councilors, we have minutes to approve from February twenty-fourth. Can I have a motion? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion has been made by Councilor Levy, seconded by Counselor. I mean, I'm sorry, motion has been made by Councilor Luzon.
Seconded by Councilor Levy. Discussion on the minutes. Name and length, all of the papers say aye. So aye and the ayes have it. All right, the first order of new business we have. We have item eighty-two dash twenty-five, confirmation appointment of Victor Ortega Cruz as Director of Veteran Services. Our acting director, HR Director, and Deputy Attorney.
Now, the councilors, we do have a thirty-day timeframe for this, uh, for full appointment or full approval or, uh, denial, uh, which expires on March thirty-first. And we have our H R Director, Attorney, you have the floor.
Good evening, uh, Councilwomen.
Oh, hold on. If you leave, if, okay, if you leave, I will have quorum.
She left.
Sorry, I don't have quorum right now.
It's okay.
Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilwomen. We are before you for the confirmation of Mr. Victor Ortega Cruz to the Director of Veteran Services. Mr. Ortega Cruz is a veteran himself with a number of years of experience. But before I give away too much, uh, I'll give Mr. Ortega Cruz the floor.
Are we following this? Is, is this?
Yeah, I paid it for you guys, yeah.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Victor E. Ortega. I live, uh, four Union Street.
So I guess Mr. Ortega will, will just tell us a little bit about yourself and, and your goals for the department and, um, yeah, whatever you would like to share with this committee.
All right, so good evening, uh, members of the council. Uh, do thank you for giving me the opportunity to be in front of you today. I was going to Puerto Rico and, uh, after experiencing financial challenges with my family, we decided to move, uh, to the United States. In two thousand and one, I was laying down on the couch, uh, watching TV, and it was breaking news. My mom announced that there was a building in fire. Uh, when I opened my eyes, I witnessed a second plane hit, uh, the Twin Towers. Uh, that sparked a lot of, uh, motivation for me to enlist in the military and to serve, uh, my country. Not knowing English, it took me a while, uh, to pass the test. It's, it's as required to join the military. And I faced a lot of challenges trying to even take that next step, uh, into joint. But I never gave up and I continued to, uh, take the test. And I finally, in two thousand and five, I joined, uh, the United States Marines. In two thousand and seven, I deployed to Iraq. I spent a year in Iraq and I was in charge of supervising the training on my team and I helped the reconstruction of the city that we were assigned to. We helped to rebuild schools, hospitals, and other basic facilities for like water, electricity, to help improve the living conditions of the population. In two thousand and nine, I served in Afghanistan as a squad leader and I was in charge of base security and inspection of traffic coming in and out of base. I was also part of a rescue and a recovery mission that helped secure the crash site that took the lives of four Marines that night. In two thousand and twelve, I was assigned as a Marine Corps recruiter and my initial assignment was the office in Haverhill. But my command decided that they needed someone that could connect with the community and spoke the language. So I was reassigned to the office in Lawrence. As a recruiter in Lawrence, I felt at home like I had never witnessed a more welcome community, uh, during my three years that I spent as a recruiter in Lawrence. I ended up enlisting close to forty, fifty-four residents of Lawrence into United States Marines, in which some of them are currently serving the city today. And sadly, some of them are not with us today. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, I received my discharge papers and I became a United States veteran. But no one prepared me towards to come. The transition from military service to civilian was not easy. And as a veteran, I did have, I did not have someone to guide me or point me in the right direction of what I needed to do to become successful. As a veteran, I bring twelve years of experience in management, supervision, mentoring, and leadership, having worked as a recruiter where I gained valuable experience in public speaking and advocacy. During my time working in the Department of Veteran Services, I have the privilege of contributing to veterans rehousing, assisting veterans with federal and state benefits, attended a great number of meetings and training to be in compliance with the state regulation. And also during the four, uh, months as the Director of Veteran Services, I compiled some data that I prepared for you guys on that package that shows the amount of veterans living in the city, uh, divided by race, by age, uh, war period, and the income they bring, uh, to the city as well. These experiences have given me a strong foundation in understanding and navigating different resources to help the veteran community. I am confident that my skills in leadership, problem solving, and confidence will allow me to effectively serve the veteran community and contribute to their success. If confirmed, my primary goal will be to reach every veteran in the city and inform them about the services we provide and that we are here to assist them in any way we can. I am committed to ensuring that the needs of our veterans' community are met and I believe in our collaborative approach to tackle the challenges ahead. My vision is to make the veteran community in Lawrence to be the leading example and the leading beacon for others to follow. I am dedicated to serving all veterans with transparency, integrity, and focus on long, on long-term solutions. In closing, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for your consideration today, for allowing me to be in front of you today. And I'm fully committed to giving my best efforts in this role and working together with you guys. Once again, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilors, do we have, uh, any comments or questions for either the H R Director or Mr. Ortega? Seeing none, I guess I, I do have one comment. And this is, I guess, constructive criticism. One thing I would appreciate, and this is not for you, Mr. Ortega, this is, uh, to, to send back to the, to the administration. I did notice, um, once Mr. Ortega was selected that there was a press release that went out. It was, it was made, as, as it should, because your background is amazing. Uh, it was made a, a big deal. However, this process was not completed. Um, sending out a press release prior to the City Council confirmation, you never know what can happen at the City Council. Sometimes you think something's gonna pass and it might not. Sometimes you think it's not gonna pass and it does pass. Uh, so I just advise the city to hold off on, I mean, things become public anyways, but hold off on official statements until the entire process is, is completed. Um, and that's my only feedback or my only comment on, on this particular item. Other than that, I think, Mr. Ortega, your, your years in the Marines, um, you know, any, anything, you come directly from the military. You know directly what, um, firsthand what our veterans are going through. You've went through it yourself. And, um, so I, I thank you for coming to the city of Lawrence.
Oh, thank you.
And, um, I thank the city for allowing you the opportunity. And I hope everyone gives you a, a fair opportunity to, to turn that, that department around because it does need a lot of help.
Well, yeah, that's my goal.
Uh, so that's, that's the only comment and statement I have on this item. Any other statements or comments? I mean, statements or questions? Seeing none, wow, you have it easy, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilors, at this point, uh, can I have a motion to send item eighty-two dash twenty-five up with a favorable rec- recommendation? Motion has been made by Councilor Levy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Luzon. Discussion? Oh, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And the ayes have it.
Thank you.
There's one more stuff. So we will, we will see you at the full council meeting next Tuesday. At, it starts at seven. Um, and then that will be the final vote on the confirmation. But best of luck and thank you again for, for joining us.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night. Councilors, the next item we have, item eighty-three dash twenty-five. To confirm the reappointment of Francisco Abad to the Lawrence Planning Board. Um, he is currently a full voting member with the term expiring twelfth, uh, December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight. And it's brought to us by our Planning Director, Director McCarthy. Director McCarthy, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening, councilors. I'm here to introduce Francisco Abad as a candidate for the, uh, full voting membership to the, uh, Lawrence zoning board. Uh, Mr. Abad has been an active member of the planning board for the last three years. He was, um, um, nominated into the position as an associate position back in, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, May of two thousand and twenty-two. And he's currently an active member and, uh, discussion with the mayor. We wish to have him appointed as a full-time voting member of the board. Um, his term would be running from December thirtieth, uh, of this year to, uh, January first of, or December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight. That's correct. And I'll let Mr. Abad, uh, present himself. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Abad. Name and address for the record?
Good evening, Francisco Abad, uh, thirty-seven Hillside Avenue.
I guess, tell us about the work so far and, and why, why you want to continue serving on the board?
Um, so far, it's been a great experience. I, um, like, like, um, Dan just mentioned, I've been on the board, uh, since May of two thousand and twenty-two. It's been a great experience. I've always been, um, I came to the country in, in nineteen ninety-six from Dominican Republic. And, um, I've always resided in the city of Lawrence. Um, I've always had a passion kind of for helping others and, and being engaged and involved in the community. I was, um, I'm a Lawrence High alumni, old Lawrence High. I might not see me, I'm pushing forty in, in three months. So, um, I've always been, um, I've always been involved with the community, played Lawrence, Lawrence basketball for fi- uh, four years. I was, was involved with the Y M C A and the community and Habitat for Humanity and things like that. And I've, I found, uh, this was a great opportunity for me to kind of make a difference and continue to, continue to, um, help others and, and be involved with the city. And, um, it's been a great experience. Obviously, I'm, I'm here in front of you guys, um, to kind of extend on that and go from an associate voting member to a full-time member. So, um, if given the opportunity, um, that's, um, I'm enjoying the experience. I feel like I am making a difference. Um, hopefully, then the rest of the team feels, feels the same. But, um, that's the reason why I'm in front of you guys. Um, just want to continue to make a difference and, uh, make an impact in the community.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I do have a question. This is for the city attorney. I, hopefully, you can answer. I don't know how this was missed, but I'm, I'm just noticing it myself right now. Um, on the cert- um, certificate of oath, the, Mr. Abad's, in his address, the city is not included. I don't know if that's, do we have to resubmit the, the certification of oath? Is that something we can fix?
It just doesn't have his address on it?
It has, it has his address, but it doesn't have the city. The city, the city section is blank.
Yes. I, if, if you know that the, this, the address is contained in the city of Lawrence or you know the address, that's fine.
But I, there's many Hillside Abs. I don't know where, which Hillside Abs he's, he's talking about, referring to.
Hillside Avenue in Lawrence.
Lawrence, okay.
Yeah.
So is that, is that, but it's, so is that something that we, that, this is a, an official certification? So is this something that needs to be corrected? Is it?
You should correct it, but I don't think it, it requires you not to vote on it.
Oh, no, no, yeah, no, no, I'm just, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not asking about the poll.
He, he has to be a resident of the city of Lawrence, so.
So can we just, for, for the record, just, can we just correct that? Could you connect with the city clerk's office and make sure that, that we have that corrected? Thank you.
And go test that you're a resident of the city of Lawrence.
Other than that, that, that was my only, that was my only question or comment regarding this. Um, councilors, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, can I get a motion to send this up as a favorable recommendation?
Motion to send item eighty-three dash twenty-five to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilor Luzon, seconded by Councilor Santiago. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And the ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councilors. Appreciate it.
We'll see you next week.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilors, our next item is item eighty-nine dash twenty-five, Creation of Job Description and Posting for School Committee Appointee. And this is to cover the education requirement. It was brought to us by the, by our council president, Giovanni Rodriguez. And we have the president with us today. Council President, you have the floor.
Thank you, councilors. Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, I mean, thank you, Vice President Infante and the council member of this committee. Uh, essentially, what, what, what we should do as a council is, uh...
Give us one second, Council President. Okay.
Good? Okay. So essentially, what we should do as a council is to ensure that we develop those, uh, job postings as it is gonna be required for us to have candidates to interview and go through the process for the school committee members. The, uh, there are gonna be interviews subsequently, uh, appointed by the council. And essentially, we, we, we need to have some sort of, uh, job posting that indicate the requirements. That's why I have, uh, three different items. Uh, one of the, one that is corresponding to education, the other one that is, uh, for...
Hold on, hold on. Can I, can I do, uh, attorney? Since all three items are about the same thing, can I take another? Can I do another motion to take it as a block?
You could take it as a block.
Okay. Councilors, can I have a motion to take item eighty-nine dash twenty-five, Creation of Job Description Posting for School Committee Appointee Education? Item ninety dash twenty-five, Creation of Job Description and Posting for School Committee Appointee Finance? And item ninety-one dash twenty-five, Creation of Job Description and Posting for School Committee Appointee Legal? As a block? Summa. Motion has been made by Councilor Santiago. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Levy. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. 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 All those in favor say aye. Aye. And the ayes have it. You may consider, Council President.
So thank you, I mean, uh, yes, it makes sense to take it as a block. Um, we gotta work it out, um, for each individual one. Essentially, what we were looking for, three postings. Uh, one that is dealing with education, the other one that deal with legals, and the other one that deals with finance. And to have those three postings, uh, uh, with what is required by law, uh, on the postings and essentially what is required for somebody to be in the school committee members, we're gonna have that. Uh, essentially, right now, it could be that it's a, as a Lawrence resident. And, and essentially, we, we are looking to have a posting for people that have those backgrounds. So essentially, have a, a pool of candidates and this council gonna be able to make a determination on a specific candidate. Councilors, it is, it is also important to recognize that, um, the council will make, uh, those, will make, will appoint and confirm those candidates. Only the council. So essentially, that's why we're taking a step forward and be proactive about this, about that, about the job posting, since it's gonna be our responsibility to, uh, go through the pu- the pool of candidates, uh, all those candidates that apply. And also, uh, be able to, um, interview, confirm, and appoint each candidate that is gonna be part of the, uh, of the school committee for the three appointees positions. So what I would like to see is, um, have it, uh, job posting and also, uh, post, post, post those positions, uh, at the city website, perhaps six months ahead of time. And that way, we have, we have no excuses of anybody seeing it. We have no excuses of not having enough time. Uh, and we have no excuses of people not be able to apply because of time issues. That's, that's the goal. So we have that posted on the website. And, uh, and then we can determine it whether or not, um, when we're gonna be closing those, uh, positions and so forth and so on. My intention with these three items is to create the job posting so we can be open and transparent to, uh, to the public so they be able to have an opportunity to discuss those and be able to apply on time.
Councilors, any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Councilor Santiago?
The question that I have is about those, those different persons eh, have to qualify with those different, eh, profession. And they need the salary to request. Can you explain how we can pay?
Yes. Uh, one of the items that I have on the, uh, on the ordinance committee that we haven't, we haven't, um, we haven't been able to develop that, uh, the salaries and benefits for the school committee members is the, is the, uh, the, the benefit package. That ordinance, as per the city charter, uh, need to be, need to be done. I actually have an item, but I haven't been able to kind of like put that package together to present it to the ordinance committee. Um, I actually, uh, I believe I sent, I sent an email to, to you, right? About the, yeah, the posting, I mean, about the, about the benefit package for the, uh, school committee members. School committee members. Yes, we, I have, I have sent an email to the city attorney and, uh, and I believe to the city clerk. So we can work together to get a package for, a benefit package for the school committee members. Uh, that's gonna be for the appointees and that's gonna be for the, uh, for the regular electeds. Uh, for the, all of them. Uh, and essentially, the, the city council will be able to, to work on that benefit package to ensure that we get candidates to, uh, and also be able to get people that apply for those positions, uh, with some sort of benefit as well. So we are going to work on a benefit package that we all agree that is a fair package and it is a, uh, a competent package, uh, benefit package for the, for the school committee member. That will include, uh, in the way that I see it, that, that will include a specific amount of money and also other benefits. That could be, uh, it could be, uh, benefit related to the health insurance uh, and other benefits. I think it's, it's, it's something, it should be very, very close or similar to the city council one.
Thank you, Madam. And what will happen with the, with the other three going to election? Eh, they're just volunteer?
No, they will get the same benefits. So the same benefit that, uh, because this package is for city, uh, for the school committees. So that's gonna be for the electeds and that's also gonna be for our appointees. That's the way that I vision it. But obviously, the city council will have the final determination as of how we want this, this, uh, benefit package to be. And as, as for who that's gonna, who's gonna benefit from it.
Okay. Thank you. Council President, I think that's fair to have, to, to, if, if this is a plan for it to be inclusive to all members, just like how it is for the city council. Um, one thing I want to, will reiterate for the members that were, that have been here, um, something that I mentioned earlier on, on one of the, on one of the, the items. However, this is worded, I don't know what's gonna come first, either this or, or the vote for, for the compensation package. But sometimes, things that we believe are gonna pass in the council does not. And sometimes, things that we believe may not pass to the council does. So however that's worded in the job description, we have to make sure that we, it depends on, you know, the timeline of, of all of this. But if, if this posting goes out before, before the process of that ordinance is completed, we just need to make sure that that's properly, um, stated in the job description so they're aware. This might come with it, it might not.
Hmm.
Um, so people are, are aware and, and the city doesn't get questioned afterwards if it doesn't pass.
See, yeah, then the intent is to, uh, start working on the, on the, on the posting. Uh, if the benefit package come in, then, uh, we can definitely, uh, readjust the posting. Uh, but at least we have something on the books that we start working, uh, because it's better, it's better off to be proactive than reactive.
Any other questions or comments? Council Lev- Council Levy?
So, um, we're gonna say bye. So, do you think we're done?
The intent is to present the benefit package to the city council. We, as a council, will, we're gonna make a determination as of what's gonna be there. But we're gonna present the package, uh, that are gonna be, if you ask me, I'll prefer to be inclusive to everybody, uh, either elected or, or non-elected. Uh, but essentially, the, the city council will make a determin- final determination. Uh, and why I might say that it should be equal for both is because at the end of the day, uh, then we might get people that, you know, apply for those positions because of the benefit package. But we also wanna get the knowledge behind it. Uh, those are very specific positions. One is related to education, uh, that it could be a former teacher. One is, we could be, that is the legal. It could be a, a, an attorney. We don't know. One is, we could be, that is the legal, it could be a, a, an attorney, we don't know. And that one could be, uh, and the other one which is related to, which is related to uh, one is, one is education, the other one is legal and finance. One could be somebody that is, they have a, a, a good background in finance, but not necessarily um, have a benefit package that uh, help them out. If you look at those positions, and we look at how um, individuals have different companies, we have a lot of finance people that have individual, um, independent companies that they might don't have uh, part of the benefit package, and they go, they might get, and say, you know what? I'm gonna apply for this position because I wanna give back to my community, but also, I'm getting something back. And that's not, I mean, that's not unfair, and that's something that a lot of people would like to see. And a lot of people would like to, uh, would like to talk, at least talk about it. But like I said, councilors, this is something that is at the ordinance committee, and, and this is something that we're gonna present uh, to entire council to see uh, how the, the city council uh, perhaps vote on a benefit package that is gonna benefit the city, I mean, the, the school committee members.
Counsel is on.
So it is the, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, is the ordinance committee working on this ordinance already?
Uh, uh, they, I actually was the responsible body of putting that in front of the ordinance committee as a council president, and I'm working on that. Uh, I'm gonna start working on that with the city attorney and the city clerk all together, so we can, we at least look into the different uh, benefit package that we have, and that we have had in the past, and be able to present something to the ordinance committee.
I mentioned this, 'cause we sit here every, every two weeks, and we ask the departments to have things in order. Uh, and I'm gonna echo Madam Chair, 'cause you always mention the same thing over and over, and it looks like we uh, are doing the same thing that you request every week, so, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it doesn't the ordinance supposed to come first?
Yeah, so we, um, so this is, let's, let's take the compensation benefits package away. This, that has, we're, we're, let's, let's handle what's at, what's, um, in front of us. So the job description, creation of job description and posting. We do, I, actually, 'cause this is, this was a, a home rule petition, so I believe it needs to be added to the city charter? These new, these new appointee?
Uh, no, uh, the ben, the benefit pa, were you talking about the benefit package or the posting?
I'm talking about the, the appointees.
The posting itself, uh, we're gonna, we have to uh, open it up for the public. The way that we open it up for the public is through a job posting.
No, no, that, that I understand, I'm saying the changes, so, because this is an, an appointment, um, three appointment positions, I believe we do need an ordinance for each, for each, um, uh, point, appointment. And my question is, because it's a home rule petition, is a change to the city charter, I believe this also needs to be added to the city charter. Or I may be wrong, I don't know, I'm looking, I'm gonna ask the city attorney.
We, we already have the city charter change, section five of the, of, the city, the, the home rule petition changed the city, the city charter section five, uh, which allow, uh, allow this to happen. So essentially, what we're doing is developing the posting, so people can apply to those positions specifically.
I'm just gonna get a confirmation from the city attorney, so the, the vote on the home rule petition.
So, let's break it up in two parts. The home rule petition took care of the changing of the entire.
Got it.
For the charter. Part two is, I do agree with you, what you have to now do is change the ordinance, so that it's not six elected. You have to change the ordinance to reflect that, here's three positions that you're gonna have, what, you know, these are gonna be appointed, that, what the duties of each of the appointments, and three are gonna be elected. So you do have to change the ordinance section of the school committee, so that reflects what the actual comp, compulsion is gonna be.
Okay, thank you.
The school committee is not on the ordinance?
It's not an ordinance, it's a charter.
If it's not ordinance, but we'll take a look at it. We'll take, I'll take.
So can we just double check, so I'm, I'm not talking about the actual, I'm, I guess, I'm more asking the three appointed positions, do those positions need to be ordinance, just like every other appointed position that we have? So yeah, so I'm getting the nod from two attorneys here. So, Council President, either way, I was, I was planning to ask the committee to, to table these three items, um, to give you time to work with the HR. I know we already have, um, a similar jo, uh, uh, at least a foundational job description that we've used in the past, that you can use that, um, to reflect what is needed.
Essentially, uh, through your manager, is to maintain it here.
Mm-hmm.
We're not looking to send it up at all, but just have that, uh, the HR director working on those positions, and then when we have everything ready, uh, when it comes to the order ordinance that we have, uh, that are for the benefit package, to integrate that into the posting, and also to make sure, like, when we have, uh, everything done and clear when it comes to the charter and, and the ordinance, that we get, we get that, but in the meantime, we don't want to just sleep on it.
Right.
Uh, because, I mean, we haven't done, I mean, uh, we, we need to advance it a little bit, and then everything will take place once, once, uh, once we have the two different ordinance that we're working on separately.
Okay. Uh, Council Levy.
Are we thinking to have those positions filled out, uh, by, before the final election?
Hmm, if you ask me, eh, we shouldn't. Uh, uh, as a, as a city council president, I will say that we should, we should fill those positions, uh, after November. I think that we should accept nominations, uh, or allow people to, uh, apply for those all the way until November. And then at the November, uh, at sometime, sometime in November, when the election happen, it could be that, uh, we stop getting, uh, applicants, uh, to make it fair. And, and then after that, what I would like to see is that any, anytime within November and December, uh, have those, uh, positions to be filled, and everybody, uh, during the, uh, during the time that, that electors take the oath, they can be there as well as an appointee. Not at the same ceremony, or at the stage perhaps, but, uh, as an especial guest, that they're gonna be part of the school, a part of the school committee. That's how I vision it, um, and that way, we together, to start working together right away in January.
All right, with the HR department and the city attorney's, uh, department to final, to drop something, and then bring it back.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, that's the intent, to start early, we're in March, so still have time, but I would like to see this posting to be, uh, on the website at least six month, and that way, we can actually, uh, receive people and give a lot of, a lot of time to people.
Awesome, thank you, Council President.
No problem.
Counselors, can I have a motion to table items eighty-nine dash twenty-five, ninety dash twenty-five, and ninety-one dash twenty-five?
Summa.
Motion has been made by Council Santiago, seconded by Council Levy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Counselors, can I have a motion to untable item forty-nine dash twenty-five authorization to fill enforcement prosecutor position? Ordinance, uh, number zero-two-point-seven-two-point-zero-five-zero, inspectional services vacant for more than six months. Brought to us by the HR Director and ISD Director.
Summa.
Motion has been made to untable zero second. Seconded by Council Levy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Counselors, last time we had some questions, um, pertaining this, I believe there's an update for this committee, so I'm gonna give the floor to the HR Director.
So just to be quite frankly, I was, to be quite frank, I'm sorry, I'm so short. Uh, to be quite frank, I, I thought that it was going to be Attorney Tim Hooton that was gonna be, uh, in front of you today. Uh, to my understanding, you've requested that there be some sort of legal, um, legal opinion pertaining to, to this, um, to this. So I'll give him the floor, and if you have any further questions, I'll be here, please feel free.
Now, councilors, I do wanna remind, we are dealing with the actual ordinance, or the actual, yeah, the, the reauthorization of this item, not an individual, not any, we're solely focusing on the reauthorization of this position.
That is correct. If, if you were to ask me any questions about a particular individual, uh, we would have to be in executive session, um, but this is, that, that's not before you tonight, uh, because it would involve reputation, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, what we have tonight is, if you have any questions regarding the prosecutor position, um, I'm happy to answer that, if you wanna know, uh, what I know of it, I'm happy to give you that, but. Again, I'm not the department head, the department head is here. The prosecutor position would, uh, go to the housing court or the district court to enforce, um, the rules and regulations of inspectional services. Um, you, question you might ask me is, what have we done if we haven't had this position? Um, my office would handle that. Um, I believe that there's only been three, maybe tops five times in the past year, that anybody's asked me to go to court on any of these, uh, we've taken care of that. So, um, that would be taken over by the new person, um, they would then take it to court. I, I assume that they would work in conjunction with my office, but I don't know that. But as of right now, my office would handle it until the appointment of this person.
Thank you, Attorney Hooton. Uh, any questions for the city attorney? Seeing none, thank you, I have a question for the ISD Director.
Good evening, Madam Chair, councilors.
Good evening, oops, sorry. Um, so hearing, getting, receiving the information that we just received from the city attorney, what other, I'm trying to find the, um, the tabled, uh, oh, here it is. What would be the task, addition, other tasks besides going to court that this position may?
Yeah, so, um, we have, um, it's what's called the, the Mass General Law Forty-U. Uh, we issue, um, you know, tickets, uh, when people, there's housing code issues, uh, any, uh, any businesses, illegal dumping, anything like that. So anything has to do, anytime that we, um, anytime that we have to, um, um, issue tickets, they will be in charge of that whole, um, um, that whole, uh, section of, you know, of, 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 um, excuse me. Um, so, you know, they, they, they would essentially be in charge of anything that has to do with ticketing uh, under the Forty-U, Forty-U, uh, law that's, that's, um, that we enforce.
Okay. And what is the plan for the department?
Um, I explained, as I explained before, um, so last year, we issued, uh, I forget how many tickets, but, you know, we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars outstanding that we didn't collect, because we don't have the person to do that. Um, um, and we only collected thirty thou, thirty-two thousand, um, um, thirty-two thousand dollars, it, only because the people complied on their own.
No, I, I mean, I mean, for the actual position, what is, what is the plan?
So the, the plan is, if, if the council wishes, um, we could, I could repost the position, and have everybody apply, and come in, and we'll interview everybody.
Okay. Counselors, any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I, I have a question, um, for Director Ruiz.
Yes.
So, can you explain what are the duties of the, um, it says, I'm reading the ordinance here, and at, uh, almost at the end of the part eight, it says, relay duties as, as are assigned by the Commissioner of Inspection Services. So besides this, um, employee going to the court to be the liaison between the court and the attorney's office.
Yes.
What will be others', uh, responsibility of this?
So they would, they would manage the, it's called Citizen Serve, all the tickets, all the inspectors, when they write tickets, it goes into Citizen Serve, um, so depending on what the violation is, sometimes it, you know, they have five days, ten days, thirty days, um, so they would have to, um, monitor all that, and then, you know, and then af, after that, they would have to, uh, once they monitor it, and then they would have to send letters out, um, you know, complaints, uh, file complaints, go, you know, they, they would have to go to hu, housing court, work with the attorney's office. Um, also, they, you know, they would be, um, yeah, so anything that has to do with, with, uh, with the, you know, like illegal dumping, um, you know, we issue, I'd say twenty, twenty, you know, ten to twenty tickets a day. So it, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's something that's constant, um, because, you know, um, a lot of, some businesses, some apartments, some landlords, don't wanna comply, so that's what we use for them to comply. Um, that, that's basically it, yeah.
Up to you, Madam Chair, so this employee is gonna be in direct contact with, uh, uh, homeowners, business owners?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yeah.
So it, it's, um, concerning that, uh, being bilingual is not part of this, uh.
That would be an HR thing, um, I don't, you know, I don't know.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
So Attorney, um, well, Director Attorney, so, knowing that our community is, is mostly bilingual, mostly, uh, they speak Spanish, most of them. So it's concerning that seeing that bilingual, being bilingual is a requirement for this position, based on what the Director explained.
I can definitely understand your concern, um, it's something that we can, we can obviously address. Uh, I do believe that it, that this position is ordnanced, so it would have to reflect an ordinance as well.
Thank you.
Any other question, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Council Levy.
So if we fit the position, what happened with the old tickets that we attend?
So, right now, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. So, you know, right now, we don't have anybody doing that job, so what happens is, when, when we issue a ticket, there's a procedure that we go by, you know, you have twenty-one days, then, you know, um, then if they don't do it, then, you know, they, they, they're supposed to, uh, appeal the ticket, they have certain time to appeal the ticket, if they don't, you know, if they don't, uh, once, if they don't have nowhere to appeal the ticket, then, then the, the ticket is now void, basically, I, 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 I'm pretty sure that's, uh, we can't go after them because they need an appeal process. So we need, uh, we need, you know, someone, uh, uh, a prosecutor to go to court, just if they don't wanna pay. Um, they go to court, you know, they, they work with the housing court, uh, and they work with the, with the, with the city attorney's office.
So practically, we are, we are on the domain, so our home fee is, we have to provide it's gonna be completed by us?
Well, mostly because the time lapses, the time lapses, so basically, that money's gone. You know, we have other options, we could put liens on, on the properties also, but that would be the prosecutor that does that. So there, there, there's a number of, uh, uh, number of, um, things that we can do, but we need the prosecutor to, to do that. We just don't have the personnel to do that, it's, it's, it's a full-time job.
So that's the prosecutor to do that, so is somebody coming on board to work on that position? If we have the time to do it, or we not, or no?
I'm sorry, say again?
If we have somebody working on that position?
Yes.
And still, we're gonna still have the time to recover it, the, um, um?
Um, that would be a legal question, I'm not sure. Because there's, 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 uh, there's a time, there's a time period, when, when you issue, when you issue tickets under the Forty-U, Mass General Law Forty-U, then, you know, there's specific time periods and specific things that you have to follow, and if you don't, then the ticket, in my opinion, is not on board.
So just, just so we can say, the, the, the problem with the process, to be honest with you, is that the, we've gone through a couple of directors, and, um, we at one time had a trash task force, which consisted of myself, a police officer, members of the DPW. Uh, we would, uh, chase people, we could take them to court, and then that gradually just fizzled out, uh, it, it just wasn't being enforced by a prior, uh, head of the department. Um, it also, what happens with these tickets, is you issue a ticket, um, at some point, if someone disagrees with the ticket, they can appeal it. Um, that's a person, is supposed to be an independent person, that hears the ticket then, and they are called a Forty-U, and Forty-U is just a section of the Mass General Law it's in. Um, at prior, we had, eh, from the firefighters, we, they had a grant, and the person that did that was paid for, was free. Uh, we had that for a long period of time. Uh, later, I was asked to, um, get some Forty-U. Uh, later, I was asked to, um, get some Forty-U, um, uh, attorneys. These would be attorneys, because you, you need it impartial, if you're, if you're appealing it to the person that gave you the ticket, it's not really impartial. So, and, and I had contacted a couple of attorneys who agreed that they would be Forty-U officers. But then again, that just went by the wayside, nobody did anything with it, so. Realistically, that's a long way of saying, to answer, if, if they haven't appealed the ticket, yes, we can still collect the money. We can still take them to court and collect the money. But, I mean, I'm not gonna suggest that it feels like ten years old, but it shouldn't be, because we were doing this not, not that long ago. And like I say, my office still does it if, if requested, so.
And so, so they having appealed, so they having appealed the ticket?
They, they haven't appea- if, if they want, no, some people don't appeal. Some people just get their ticket and they just let it sit, and they let it sit, and they, they know, they kinda count on the fact that the city's never gonna come after them. But some people appeal, and those people have a right to a hearing. Now, if they don't have their hearing, uh, as the Director said, it, the ticket would probably be dismissed. But I don't know, unfortunately, I was left out of the loop, you know, I don't know who's appealing tickets, I don't know how many people have requested Forty-Us. Like I said, I was very deeply involved probably a year and a half ago, and we had a, a pretty good task force going. But, um, right now, I'm, no one's asked me.
Long story short, no one's asked you.
No.
Thank you, Attorney Hooton. Well, you wanna, Council President?
Uh, thank you, uh, to the committee for the opportunity. Just to, just to put in perspective, what we have done at the city council before with the pos- with the position and the requirement of, of chapter, chapter forty, Forty-U, as the city attorney mentioned, is that we have to have somehow a way to resolve the ticket at the city level. And for that to happen, you cannot have, uh, somebody that give you the ticket here to be the person that you appeal the ticket to. Uh, so essentially, we, what we did as a city was that we have a prosecutor that came into the city, uh, to hear those ticket out. And before you get it to the court, you have to have that step here at the city level. And, and we not, we not having that, having this position, uh, enacted, potentially, we're not solving the problem. The problem here is that, uh, we have to have the, 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 the task force that we used to have, uh, with that, uh, with the positions that, with the position that actually can hear the ticket out, uh, for the people to come over in front of that person before we take it to court. So the solution that we're looking for right now is not necessarily the solution of the problem. So we have, we have, we can actually look into the record of the ci- the city council records of when we approve, uh, the, uh, the process or the way of doing, uh, the han- the, how we handle the ticket at the City of Lawrence. Um, I believe that, that, uh, the chief association sends somebody over to be the prosecutor, uh, on a volunteer basis. And, uh, with the intent of that, we can develop that program and, and, and make it, make it going. Because without that in place, uh, we're not gonna be able to, to get those ticket to the court.
Let, let me just be very specific. The position you have here has nothing to do with the Forty-U here. That has to be a very specific, different person, it can't be, it's not gonna be a member of the city coun- uh, the, the, a member of the City of Lawrence. That's gonna be an attorney or somebody that we hire that will do the hearings. We can use, uh, in many cases, we, we can use Methuins, we can use someone else. So that's, until, the prosecutor doesn't get it until we fill the Forty-U. We need to have a Forty-U hearing officer who will hear these tickets first, that's step one. Because if somebody appeals it, doesn't matter if you have the prosecutor anyways, because if they've appealed it and they didn't get a hearing, they, their rights, they, their ticket is dismissed. The prosecutor, what happens is, the Forty, it's simple as this, you get a ticket, you either pay it or don't pay it. If you don't like it, you appeal it, you, you go to the Forty-U hea- hearing, this is an independent person. At that point, that person can dismiss the ticket, say, nope, I agree with, you've done the work, the inspector was wrong. Or that person can then say, um, no, you owe the ticket. At, at that point, the person can either pay the ticket, and if they don't pay the ticket, our only way of enforcing it is to have a third, that, uh, someone take it to court. Whether it be attorney or, or the, or this prosecutor takes it to court, that's, that's the third step. So right now, the problem is, we do not have a Forty-U officer.
So essentially, the, the prosecutor is the administrative person that's gonna put all the paperwork together, make sure the ticket, uh, you know, is written the, the correct way, train the people to write the tickets, um, and make, you know, just to make sure, before it goes, you know, further, um, that, you know, they're doing, that, you know, that person would have to be trained anyways. So they would, you know, I would send them to, you know, different training, um, and as the, you know, the city attorney stated, um, we still need a independent person for, to do the appeal process. The, the prosecutor's not gonna do that, they're just basically the administrative person that's gonna make sure that everything's good before it goes to that level. And then they go to the hearing and they present in front of the, in front of the other, in the appeals person, that, that's how it works.
Okay. All right, um, I mean, I'm, I'm, from what I've heard tonight, it appears that, it, it looks like you, you wanna repost this.
Yes.
Repost this, put this out there, I'm okay with that, with it being reposted, people applying for it and et cetera, like the process starting again, um. Other than that, I mean, Council Luzon mentioned something about the ordinance, that's an ordinance-specific item. So it would be nice to get the ordinance, um, committee members' opinions or input on that. Um, so with that, I'm okay with sending this as a committee report to the full council to get those answers and to give those members an opportunity to speak. Um, other than that, I don't have, I don't have anything else to say on this.
I have a question, Madam Chair, if I may.
Council Luzon.
So it, so they, it's gonna be, uh, they gonna open for interviews again, is that what I'm getting?
Yeah, so, um, like, like, uh, like I stated, I'm willing to, um, you know, with, with, you know, with, uh, you know, and working with the personnel, um, director, um, to, you know, post the position, do the interviews, and do the whole process again.
Um, that, thank you for doing that, Director, and for, uh, Humans Resource, thank you for doing that. I'm okay, uh, satisfied with that.
Council Luzon. I mean, I'm sorry, I, I was looking at Council Levy, but I was, Council Levy.
Just with that, uh, just we, I don't remind you that, uh, to, uh, the official should be bilingual, at least, with his, but...
Uh, I'm not sure about that.
Council President?
Well, thank you again. Um, essentially, the reason why we send this item to the, uh, to this committee, instead of sending it to the, uh, ordinance committee, it was because the intensity is to, uh, look into the, um, the current posting we have for that position. And if it is anything that the committee, uh, is intent or, or really believe that, that need to be changed on the ordinance, so you, the, the committee ref- the committee report reflect those changes. And then subsequently, we can actually look for a, a change of the ordinance and reauthorize the position with the proper changes. Because obviously, those positions sometime they very old. When was the last time that we post this position?
Which, Council President, I did, I did explain that last meeting, when we first, um, dealt with this item. I did explain that the purpose of this was to look over the job description and, and ensure that that...
If it is any changes, and then recommend it to the full council. And then don't do, don't do things all the way around, because essentially, what happened in the past is that, uh, being happened within my term as well, is that we sent our, uh, job descriptions and, and ordinance to, uh, the ordinance committee without having the, the study or the research behind it. And essentially, just reauthorized all previous ordinance that we have the opportunity to change but didn't. So essentially, that's, that's the whole thing, that's the whole purpose. So if you guys recommend that to the city council, would be awesome.
I did explain that as well, thank you, Council President. All right, so I think, um, any other final questions or comments? Seeing none, all right, I, I think we should send this up as a, a, a committee report. So if I can get a motion to send item forty-nine dash twenty-five as a committee report to the full council. Motion has been made, Council Levy, seconded by Council Santiago, discussion?
Yes.
Council Le- uh, Council Luzon, you guys are both out.
Uh, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, it's my here, I guess. I just wanna put up there, and, and I thank you, uh, Director Ruiz, for, uh, letting us know that this is gonna be reposted. And it means that it looks like the intention of, uh, having a process with transparency i- is in place. Unfortunately, we get, uh, information before, we get information from the community before it gets to the council. And it's sad, but it means that the process is not working, uh, how it's supposed to work. So I'm very glad, and I wanna say thank you for deciding to do this, because it, it means that it's an intention there, uh, for transparency. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Luzon. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. So we will see you guys next week. Thank you. Uh, at this point, there are no other matters, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made by Council Santiago, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Luzon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it, thank you.
I don't think you put in your recommendation that the person be bilingual, I would've...
It's part of, it's part of the committee report, yeah, so I, I would be stating that, yeah, 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 yeah.